Good evening, and welcome to the March 2nd, 2015 meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. Could I ask the clerk to call the roll, please?
Certainly. Honorable Mayor Schoenheimer?
Here.
Alderman Waldeck?
Here.
Alderman Beidler?
Here.
Alderman Moore?
Here.
Alderman Pandalion?
Here.
Alderman Tac?
Here.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Here.
Alderman Adelman?
Here.
Alderman Moreno?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. But, would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. First item on the agenda this evening is reports to city officers. First under that is comments by mayor. I'd like to take the opportunity to read proclamation about Arbor Day if I would. Whereas Arbor Day will be officially observed in the state of Illinois on Friday, April 24th, 2015, by proclamation of the governor, and the planting of trees on Arbor Day is a traditional activity throughout the state and the city of Lake Forest. And whereas Lake Forest with its environment of natural areas is particularly dedicated to the observance of this day, and has consistency throughout its history enacted ordinances to preserve its trees and other natural assets. Whereas citizens groups, garden clubs, private and public institutions have actively supported preservation efforts and the renewal of natural acres through tree planting and landscape projects. And whereas the celebration of Arbor Day 2015 in Lake Forest will include the distribution of 2,000 red oak seedlings to students in public and private elementary schools, and Arbor Day 2015 will be celebrated throughout the day in programs at schools and other locations. And at West Park, located at 850 Summit in Lake Forest, and on Friday, April 24th, at 10:00 a.m., where the city's annual Arbor Day trees, one bur oak tree, will be planted. And whereas trees in our city, wherever they're planted, increase property values, enhance our business in residential areas, beautify our community, and are a source of joy to gladden the hearts and promote the environmental well-being of present and future generations. And whereas the city of Lake Forest has been recognized as Tree City USA for 34 consecutive years by the National Arbor Day Foundation. Now therefore, I, Donald P. Schoenheimer, Mayor of the city of Lake Forest, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 24, 2015, as Arbor Day in the city of Lake Forest, and I urge all citizens to support the efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, to support our city's forestry program, to plant trees on this day, and to join in the celebration ceremonies. In witness thereof, I here under set my hand and have had the seal of the city of Lake Forest affixed to this, this 24th day of April, 2015. Next item on the agenda, Emergency Telephone System Board, ETSB meeting. I'd like to open the public meeting for the ETSB and ask for a call of the roll, please.
Honorable Mayor Schoenheimer?
Here.
Alderman Waldeck?
Here.
Alderman Beidler?
Here.
Alderman Moore?
Here.
Alderman Pandalion?
Here.
Alderman Tac?
Here.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Here.
Alderman Adelman?
Here.
Alderman Moreno?
Here.
Police Chief James Held?
Here.
Deputy Police Chief Carl Waldorf?
Here.
Fire Chief Jeff Hall is absent.
Thank you, Biddy. Chief Held?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of council, and members of the ETSB. I just want to give a quick update on where we are with our central dispatching. As most of you know, back in September of 14, we decided to centralize our dispatching system with neighboring communities of Highland Park, Lake Bluff, Highwood, and be dispatched out of the Highland Park Police Department by Glenview employees. Since that time, I would say it's gone exceptionally well. I am not quite honestly aware of any complaints that have come into the police department. I don't want to speak for the city manager's office, but I'm not sure that they've received any complaints regarding anything from residents on how the dispatching is going. So from an exterior standpoint, as far as the calls are being answered, the calls are being dispatched, and fire and police units are responding accordingly, it's gone very well. I will say that there have been some internal issues that we're working through, mostly operational type of things, technological things, but we've checked a lot of those off the list. We're still moving forward, getting some other things taken care of. So it's really gone exceptionally well from that standpoint. The dispatching, I think, has been exceptionally well by the Glenview employees. It's a very concise method of dispatching. Our officers have been very complimentary of how the dispatchers have functioned before them. Not a lot of wasted time. The calls are being dispatched very timely. They're getting them out from the time of the call to the time people are dispatched in a very quick manner. So from that standpoint, working very well. The full redundancy, which is one of the benefits of going through the centralized dispatching, is progressing along. It's not quite completed yet, but it's progressing along, and probably by the end of this year or next year, it should be completely done. One of the wonderful little side effects that came with this whole thing is both our department and the fire department, our radio frequency had dramatic improvement. The fire department, that was part of the plan all along, to have their frequencies upgraded so they would be able to communicate better. They also had to change their frequency from the one they were on before to the Highland Park fire frequency. Took a little time. It's done, and it's working great for them. They can now actually hear at the beach, which was a problem before, there always was for us also. We also, on our end, our east shore radio network that we belong to, decided to upgrade all the frequencies for members of the east shore radio network, which comprises all of the consolidated communities, plus a few other communities. So we went to a whole new system of microwave transmission, which solves a lot of problems. Solves our beach problems. It makes our communications, whether it's in the hospital, in the high school, where we always had a challenge communicating with our radios, we can now do that a lot better. So that was one of the things that came about that we weren't planning on, is being a nice side benefit of this dispatching consolidation. One of the things we have been struggling with a little bit is our lobby video camera, which, it works. We test it daily. Maybe it works one day, maybe another day. I think there's just some, again, it's technological thing, some connectivity part. Glenview's working on their end to make sure there's nothing going on on there. The phone will work. Sometimes the video doesn't work. So we're getting through that, but I think all in all, working very well for the most part. One of the other issues, and I think, I know that Mike Thomas has had this problem, during the first couple of snow issues, we had little call-out problems. That was, again, more of an operational thing with the Glenview dispatchers knowing who to call and when to get the right people out for the snow emergencies. Nothing dramatic, nothing that really caused any major issues, just maybe woke the wrong person up in the middle of the night that didn't need to be woken up. So that's going through, and Mike's staff have been great about communicating who's on call when there's an upcoming snow event or any type of storm. So that's been working out really, really well that way. I can answer any questions anybody might have. Yes?
So Chief Held, if somebody is there, forgive me, I should, well, maybe it's a good thing. I haven't actually had the experience of going in there and trying to make this work in an emergency, but it feels like what you're describing is a person could actually be there in, at the police station, talking to the central dispatch person, but not being able to see them and maybe not being able to hear them or see them?
It's usually just the video part, and that's why we check it every day to make sure.
And their instructions to, about what to do in that situation, but usually you can hear them.
Usually you can hear it. Usually the phone part is working. It's the video part that they've been struggling with the most. And that was one thing that our city and Lake Bluff all wanted was to have the two-way video as opposed to just a phone.
It's just not, okay.
It's just not 100% right now.
Okay, okay, but there's always a backup. Usually the phone, I think you said sometimes the phone is out, and I got.
We've run into it a little bit. That hasn't been recent, though. The company that installed the software and the hardware for the screen, they've been out several times. The IT people have looked at it, and for the most part, now the phone is functioning as a phone, but the videos where it struggles sometimes. You'll get that, you'll get a blank screen, and it may confuse people, that they just got to realize they can still talk on the phone. And we could probably put some kind of better instructions up there to say, "Just keep talking."
Ask about signage.
Yes, we can do something better with that, I think.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else I could answer?
I'm just curious, how often, you know, how many times a week does someone come in after hours and have a question, or, you know, and use that audio/video setup in the lobby?
Not that many. I couldn't give you a number, unfortunate to solve for, can't really, you can't track how many times it's used during whatever time of day, but it's not that many. I would venture a guess, maybe 10 times a week. That's probably a lot, though, and a lot of those are usually, what we used to get when we had dispatches there was, it might have been somebody there, just lost, looking for directions. We used to get limo drivers all the time coming into the police station, looking for an address, or people looking for addresses that said Lake Forest, but they're actually unincorporated Lake Forest. That's usually what we get after 10 o'clock, for the most part. Doesn't mean we haven't had people come in looking for assistance or looking to get somebody dispatched to, that the police department take care of their problem, though.
Chief, I have a question, but it's probably not for you. I guess George or Bob, the surcharge, which was established in '89, has not been revised, and it looks like we're 30 to 30 cents, or, George, I hate to say this, 50 percent, below market. Are we looking at that?
We haven't been until now.
Elizabeth is not here, so maybe it's not a fair question.
I was going to bring up a similar, a related question, which if you look at the fund balance as it projects out into the future, it starts to get pretty healthy. And, you know, maybe we're charging too much, you know, given the cost structure that we've got now, but clearly, we don't, I don't think we need to keep $400,000 fund balance.
Yeah, and I, without being able to say exactly, you know, there are costs that will be getting incurred, and we bought our laptops out of there. I know the fire department, there's been a few costs that have been deferred to later years that they wanted to get, part of the central dispatching, like station alerting. Their laptops, also bought sirens maintenance for the warning. There are a lot of costs in there that probably aren't, in there that have to be requested out of the budget, though.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was just going to say that we can talk about this at the March 9 budget meeting as well, but the reality is, is that we were actually gearing up to completely replace all of our dispatching equipment, and that's when we then used the other alternative. So some of the funds that we were building up were for that purpose. But I think also, over a period of time, and I think, Alderman, to get to your point, that, the city attorney can correct me, but I think the rate has to be set by referendum. So we would have to go out to the community to raise that rate, which some communities have done, but I think unless we had a specific capital expenditure, that we could go to the public and explain why we're doing that, I think it would be very difficult to do.
That's not going to work.
Right, I'll echo what Bob was saying. If you look in the materials, it did show that our referendum question was for the 65 cent charge. That's the extreme, or extent of our authority unless we go back out to referendum. We can reduce it if we choose without losing that authority, but we cannot exceed it.
I was just thinking, you know, with what's going on in Springfield, we're going to need some additional sources of revenue, and this might be a likely source, but however, that's not going to, no one wants.
One thing about the ETSB surcharge is that there are specific realms of expenditures we can make with it. And while we may not be making full use of that scope of expenditure, it's not a general revenue source.
Do salt bays qualify?
I didn't hear, but I doubt.
Do salt bays qualify?
I can research that if you'd like.
The extensive conversation. Anything else I can answer?
Anything else for Chief Held? The budget, anything else? Nothing? If not, I will ask for approval of the ETSB board of the previous expenditures as outlined in the attached expense summary and approval of the FY '15 amended budget year estimate and approval of the FY 2016 ETSB budget request as presented. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Roll call vote, please.
Honorable Mayor Schoenheimer?
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Pandalion?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Adelman?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Police Chief James Held?
Aye.
Deputy Police Chief Carl Waldorf?
Aye.
11 a, 0 n, motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy, very much. I need a motion to close the public meeting of the ETSB.
So moved.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion has passed. That concludes my comments this evening. Next item on the agenda, comments by city manager Bob Kylie.
He should have a motion to close the ETSB.
He did.
He just did.
Like I said, good job.
I want to keep up with this, Vic. We're moving here.
Moving fast.
See, he bills by the minute. That's the problem. He started to slow this thing down. Sorry, now I've completely lost what I was going to say. Back earlier in the year, the city council heard me make a presentation about sort of priority goals for the year, and mention the fact that there's going to be a lot of activity that's going to take place in the city of Lake Forest during 2015, and very positive constructive work that's going to take place, but it will be disruptive to our residents. The staff is here this evening to present a new program that we have ready to go online on the city's website that will be accessible for, whoops, somebody's microphone's not on. So what we wanted to do was to bring this to your attention, because hopefully, this will be a tool not only for residents to use, but for you to use, and if you receive calls from residents, that you can direct residents to the website so that they can hopefully get the information that they want. And this is all being driven through our GIS system, and so it's very interactive and hopefully very informative to the residents and can hopefully answer some of their questions before then. So with that, Susan Banks, I'm going to ask our communications manager Susan Banks to come up and provide more background, and then I think she's going to turn it over to our GIS expert to take it from there. So Susan?
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. As Bob mentioned, there are construction projects going on all over town. While all these things have been brewing, we've been trying to figure out the best way to communicate these to residents on kind of an at-a-glance basis, and, so, let's just bring up the website. So we've been working very hard as a team to pull together all the construction projects that are going on in every corner of the city. And if you see the orange cone up there, that is what you will be clicking on to check this construction sites area on the website. It has all the projects that are definitely taking place, whether or not they are city projects, or hospital projects, or the Laurel Avenue development. It will also contain projects that are definitely going to happen, but we don't know when, and projects that may happen, and just to keep on the site so that when stuff does happen, we can add it. It's going to be a very dynamic spot on the website that's going to be changing all the time after all of Kathy Zerniak's meetings, after all the public hearings, as we get new drawings, new photographs, new maps, new road closures, all those sort of things. So anyway, it's a really cool thing that's been developed by our GIS consultant, and Joseph Pulvita is here tonight to go through the story maps, which is something they developed, and I think we're going to be using a lot, so.
Thank you, Susan. Again, my name is Joseph Pulvita. I am a consultant, and I've been here for about 30 years, and I help manage all of the city's GIS infrastructure. And as Susan said, for about the past, I'd say, three months, we've been really trying to develop a way that both residents and city staff can immerse themselves in the ongoing construction projects and really make it as intuitive as possible. So as Susan mentioned, we do have this construction sites link on the city's homepage. Clicking that will launch an interactive map labeled "Ongoing Construction Projects in Lake Forest." There's sort of two main layouts here. On the left, you'll see a panel, and that will have all of our information about a particular project, and on the right, that's more of a spatial aspect of that project. So you can see here, it defaults to a zoomed-out view of the city, and all of the coinciding markers and lines on that map gives a general overview of the construction sites throughout the project and are numbered accordingly. So starting off on the left here, we just have a brief summary of the construction, ongoing construction projects and what that might entail. And then clicking the arrow to the left here will prompt that first project's location. So you can see here, number one is listed at Forest Park. We have a brief summary of everything that's going on, as well as updates and what can be expected. And the map here, we have it zoomed in and highlighted of that construction area, as well as a legend provided with the coinciding color. So in this case, we see "in progress" and "under construction." If that particular location were highlighted in purple, that would be "under review," and then blue would be "potential." So you can scroll down here, and that will provide you all the information we have, a contact, as well as descriptive photos for that given project. And you do have the ability to enlarge those photos if desired. So you can see here, that'll zoom there. If you click X, it'll bring you right back to the given entry that you're on. Hovering over these dots, you can see that they are numbered. So if we were to go home, and let's just say, the northwestern Lake Forest Hospital is two. So if we hit home, you see that the number two coincides with that hospital location. So if you know geographically where that construction is, you can quickly go over here to the left and hover over and find that number. So if we hit two, that'll default right to that project. Again, we have the map that's zoomed in. We have it labeled as "in progress" and "under construction," as well as the website, a brief blurb, and again, the photos that coincide with that given location. So this is really an easy and intuitive and consumable way for residents not only to see what's currently happening, but also sort of the end goal of the city as well, which is really neat, is something that, you know, really puts that into perspective. Moving on, getting on with some of the city managed and owned projects. If we go down here, and we'll just take asphalt resurfacing. Illustrated in purple, there are all those asphalt resurfacing locations. And then, again, on the left-hand side, we have when that opens, the council meeting, the construction date, construction completion, and then the contractor obviously is to be announced. We're really going in line with the city contact and who a resident can call if they have any questions or concerns, as well as the photo with that given project. And this will be updated, as of now, on a weekly basis, so we can keep residents informed as these projects progress. We do have the ability to swap out all this information on the left-hand side. So for example, the construction start is still to be determined, and we will populate that once that given entity is determined. And then also with the photos as well, if there is a desire to zoom out that photo, we can do it. So it's completely customizable in terms of the content, and we're hoping that this will give residents really a consumable method of giving, or receiving the most current and up-to-date information. With that, I will open up to any questions.
Any questions?
I would ask you, does the city use smart technology on infrastructure assets? So is anything tagged?
Can you give me an example?
I don't know that we would need to, but for example, on the sanitary linings, do we, do we record our infrastructure using tags like you would record inventory in a warehouse with a barcode, anything along that line?
So we do have another online application for in-house, so when our engineers go out in the field and assess whether that's being done, they have an application on their iPad that they can mark that complete. That's something that's currently being done with our sidewalk inventory, so that's how they're managing that. But yeah, the same thing could be transferred and applied to something like this if that were the best method of inventorying those locations.
Thank you.
Is there a general GIS site that you work with, like the county site, or, who's soft, because I use GIS a lot.
Okay. Really, all of our data?
Hey, Joe, why don't you maybe explain the organization you work for?
Okay, so I work, again, I am a contractor, and I work for a company named Municipal GIS Partners, and they are a GIS site provider. So in this case, we are, the consortium is 29 communities, and Lake Forest is one of those 29. So I've been assigned to Lake Forest, and we build all the data ourselves if we do not get it directly from county. So in the case of, we'll say, parcels, we receive all those parcels that are updated at an annual basis from Lake County. For addressing, that is all managed in-house. And so something like building footprints, or driveways, or, you know, if there's a new street that comes in, we'll construct that all on our own.
Is that information available on a GIS site that the public can access, like it would be in Kenosha County, or?
Yes, we do have an interactive map. It's labeled as Map Office, and that can be accessed through the city's website as well. On the homepage, if we go to Maps and Parking, and then down to, click here to see where I can find my closest park, or, I'm sorry, click here to view maps of any property, it will launch you to our public version of Map Office. And what this does is if you zoom in or type in an address of a resident, it will bring you to a given location throughout the city. So if I just zoom in here on the right, you could see that the downtown is addressed, cities are highlighted here, and then we have some additional tools to the left. So in the Find, you have the ability to type in an address, a pin, an intersection, and it'll zoom into that given location. And then Parcel Summary actually lets you access county information, so that would be, you know, similar to assessor data, or in this case, we also have it linked to various information that we manage in the city, such as recycling, garbage pickup. So it's a combination of both county data and our data. It looks like this is taking a little bit, but you see Parcel Summary on that City Hall parcel. It'll give you the pin, the address, the ownership name, and then so on and so on. So fire protection, snow removal, recycling, garbage. So we try to make it, again, the most consumable as we can for a resident, and put it all right here. But yeah, this would be an easy way to consume as a resident what we are managing on the GIS level within the city.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Hopefully, that if you have any questions, obviously, you can always forward them to the staff, but we thought that this was a very robust system that hopefully will answer most of the residents' questions, or at least, if we can't answer the questions, it says who the contact person is that they can get directly in contact with and work through it. Because our goal is to try and be as communicative as we possibly can with our residents about these projects, because, as I said, it's going to be disruptive, but I think the more that we can get information out to them prior to the start of the project, these people then can make accommodations and work with us and try and work around it. So thank you, Joe and Susan, very much.
Thank you.
I actually do have one more question. Is there a, is there a plan in place to sort of proactively communicate this feature on the website? Because I still envision getting lots of phone calls from people, and, you know, they could answer the questions themselves much more quickly.
Yes. I haven't sent anything out yet, but I plan on doing that. It was in Don's Mayor's message in the last dialogue. And as a matter of fact, I've already had a phone call about it, and it just went live today, so we will make sure that the press knows about it, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. That completes my report.
All right. Thanks, Bob, very much. Next item on the agenda, comments by council members. Anyone this evening? Moving on, item number four, opportunity for citizens to address the city council on non-agenda items. Is there someone who'd like to address the council this evening? Sir? Please state your name and your address, please. Yes, please.
My name is David Fontana. I live at 701 West Woodland, Lake Bluff, Illinois. I have packets for each one of you. If I could, can I pass them out, or should I?
Sure.
Okay, one second.
First, I'd like to start telling you about myself. I grew up in Highwood, live in Lake Bluff. I was a police officer in Highwood from January 1st, 1991, until July of 1994. After sustaining three injuries, I couldn't do it anymore. I began Dave's North Shore Towing. I've been in the towing business all my life, even when I was a policeman, I did it part-time. I've been on the Lake Forest Police Department police list for 21 years, along with the Highland Park, Highwood, Deerfield, Bannockburn, and now Lake Bluff. Of all the police departments, I'm Of all the police departments, I'm sorry, I'm nervous. This hurts me very much coming, because I've had several discussions with the chief, the former chiefs, the former deputy chiefs, the former sergeant, about asking them to run the tow list fairly. They only rotate calls between nine companies for accidents and abandoned vehicles. They give all the rest to one company. For 30 years, 15, I've been doing it, and H&amp;H for 15 before me, have been backing that up, that other, that one company up. It's in there. The chief has told me it's more convenient to use them. We all tow for all the police departments. In fact, Mr. Fiori from Extreme Towing is here, too. We all take release forms from them all. There's over, the one company, as you can see in there, with, from all the Freedom Information Act I filled out, with just arrests and abandons, gets anywhere from $37,000 to $45,000 a year in just arrests and abandons. That same company is on the tow list for accidents and disables, which the other nine of us are on, which is an additional $13,389. Those numbers for the nine, the other eight companies include our storage. The numbers for that one company don't. I don't think it's fair that such a big contract be given out to a company with only one tow truck. I think it should be fair. They have adopted the Highland Park pricing list for police calls. Everybody is on list, why can't they adopt their rotation and do it fairly? I have personally missed calls, because I would go out there, it'd be an arrest, they would cancel my service from my company, and then we would miss the next one. And that has brought, been brought to his attention from the Glenview dispatcher, Brent Reynolds. If it was done fairly, you would never have to worry about somebody being missed, losing a turn. I was diagnosed with progressive MS 10 years ago. It affects me in many different ways, but now I've been told that I'm going to lose my sight and my memory. I have three children to take care of. All I've ever asked for is fairness. I've never asked for favoritism. I know all the policemen, I've never asked any of them for favoritism. All I want is fairness, and we've always been given stories. Maybe you guys can come down to an answer why it has not been run fairly. And that, every bit in there is to show you, and the Lake Forest tow list that the Freedom Information Act show is the, you know, it's only for accidents and disabled vehicles. It shows you all the other police department lists, how they rotate them fairly. It's just Lake Forest that won't do it. So maybe, while the chief is here, he can give us all a reason why they refuse to do that, because for 21 years, I've been asking for it. And now, being as sick as I am, and the medicine that costs me as much as it does, along with my, all my other medical problems, I think it should be done fairly. This is Lake Forest. This is 2015, not 1970. Everybody else does it fair, why can't it be done fair here? Any comment, chief?
I am, but I'm sure they'll want to hear an answer.
You know, Mr. Fontana, thank you for bringing this to our attention and for putting this together.
And I would appreciate if you guys can let me know when you get to the, to an answer. I'll come to any meeting. And there's other things in there you can see of ways to save the city millions of dollars. I would be glad to meet with any of you and tell you other changes that should be made that can save the city in 20 years from now, $500,000 a year. There's many ways to do it. I know all the insides, all the officers know me. I'd be more than willing to meet with any of you and tell you what else goes on that should be changed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fontana. We're always open to ideas about ways to save money, so we're grateful for bringing up some ideas. Let us review this, obviously, quite a bit of material and information. We'll talk with the chief, and certainly talk with Mr. Kylie, and then get back to you. So, thank you. Anyone else? Next item on the agenda, items for omnibus vote consideration. There are eight. If there are any that any member of the council would like to remove and take separately, we'll do so, otherwise, I'll ask for a roll-call vote at the end. Item number one, approval of the February 17, 2015 city council meeting minutes. Number two, check register for the period, January 24 to February 20, 2015. Number three, consideration of resolutions supporting the Northwest Municipal Conference 2015 legislative program. Number four, award of bid for modifications to the city's two salt bays included in the FY '16 capital improvement budget. Number five, award of bid for the replacement of a recycling truck for the sanitation section, also included in the FY '16 capital equipment budget. Number six, award of a bid for an 11-foot self-propelled four-wheel-drive rotary mower for the parks section included in the FY 2016 capital equipment budget. Number seven, award of a contract for the East Train Station parking lot improvements. And number eight, request for advanced capital improvement funding to support Gorton renovation project in the FY 2015 CIP budget. Any council member wish to take any of those separately? Not, I'd ask for most, I'm sorry. Yes?
I don't want to take it off.
No, go ahead, Alderman.
The salt bay, why are we providing Metawa 150 tons of storage at our expense?
Michael, do you want to?
The Village of Metawa, we provide them basically space. They, we supply the 150 ton, and then it is basically brought back to us at the end of the season. But that was something, an agreement that was arranged when we moved from old municipal services out to the new facility in 2009. They contract to have their streets done, they don't have an in-house staff or in-house equipment that does it, and there was an arrangement that was made back in 2009 to do that, to provide that service. So they take salt from us at the end of the season, which typically equates to approximately 150 tons, that's brought back to us.
Michael, I think the question, though, is how are you, how are you billing them?
We're billing them per ton. There's a, there's a surcharge fee of $5 per ton that we charge them to load them. They'll call us whenever they need it, and they'll be relatively good at calling us early on to load their vehicles. But that's, that's typically what happens, that's the arrangement.
All right, I'm confused. So it's not their salt, it's our salt?
Initially, it is our salt, but then they replenish it. They are on the state bid, they buy 150 tons from Morton, and at the end of the season, that 150 that they have taken from us, they bring back, or Morton delivers to us.
I guess what I'm wondering is, we're spending a couple hundred thousand to beef up the salt bay, and it's not all for us, it's for another community. I wasn't here at the last council meeting when we gave the 40 beach passes away to Metawa. I'm just wondering, what is the rationale for us incurring expense for another community that's not our own?
Well, I just want to be clear, we're not incurring expense. I think Michael and his staff have figured out what the cost is associated with storing and loading that, and I think that's that $5 per ton charge that they're doing. So I don't know in the course of year how much you collect from them, but we charge them a fee for that storage and loading of their salt.
Well, we are incurring $200,000 to beef up the salt bay for salt that's not just our own.
Right, but I would also say that if they went away tomorrow, I think Michael would still say, we still need to do the improvement, so their 150 is a de minimis amount of salt, I think.
Correct, without question. The modifications to the salt bay should add at least 600 ton of capacity, if not a little bit more. But if Metawa was, if we were not to provide that service, I would take that space for Lake Forest salt immediately.
Oh, that's okay with me. I just mildly opposed to doing it for another community.
And to Mike's point, if we're adding 600 ton for, my notes aren't in front of me, but 200,000 or 300,000, right?
200,000, 210.
200,000, so we're adding $50,000 worth of capacity to handle Metawa's capacity. Or we'd be adding, I mean, at some point, it's a quarter of the bill, maybe it's not a quarter of the construction, but if we're only adding four times what they're taking up to solve our problems, it seems that it's 25% is material, whereas 150 tons on 3,800 isn't. But the construction project is certainly, I mean...
And then how do they come get the salt? Do we deliver it to them? Do they come?
No, they, Forest Builders is the company that they subcontract with to plow all their streets, so Forest Builders calls us directly, they'll bring their vehicles over, and we'll load them directly.
So is that so smart for us to let a private contractor come into our municipal services building to take salt out? I mean, are there potential liability issues? Are personnel not involved in the process at all?
Well, we absolutely are involved. I mean, we receive a phone call from them asking, you know, what time they can come over to be loaded, and that happens throughout the winter, and it has since 2009. It has worked fine, the arrangement has worked fine. The argument absolutely can be made that that 150 ton should be given and allocated for the city of Lake Forest, without question. But it's, I think, an arrangement that we developed with them to help out the Village of Metawa when we moved to the facility in 2009, and that really is the extent of it. There isn't, there isn't much more to it than that.
Mike, is that a year-by-year arrangement? Do we renegotiate that every year? Or, Bob, maybe this is a question for you, or is that a...
It is a year-by-year.
It's an at-will kind of thing, and it's because we're, we don't see it as a huge imposition to accommodate them, and they're paying us some sort of a fee.
Correct.
Even your family pays cost and overhead, right? I mean, full-cost accounting is full-cost accounting. It's not, we're not losing money per se, but it's because it...
It will take us literally minutes to load, I don't even think they have fire guards, correct?
Well, the storage and the loading, and, I mean, that's all made $5 a ton because we have this tremendous investment, which needs to be allocated over every pound of everything we move, or we're not dealing with it properly. I mean, it's costing us more than $5 a ton, because we have to pay, so, I mean, it, well, it's a nice thing to do, but...
And, but I guess, let me clarify something.
But at least charge what it costs.
Yeah, number one, the agreement that was approved last month included this in there, number one. Number two is that if we told Metawa that they either had to come up with $50,000, let's just use that amount, or go find somewhere else, I'm sure they would go find somewhere else. And we still would be before you saying, we need $200,000 to do this. I think we started in 2009, and maybe you were, I mean, we do it for the schools as well, that we just happen to be a depository for these other institutions. If we want to get out of that business, we can do so. I think that, Alderman, and Alderman, you raise a good point about the liability issue. I believe we're covered on the liability issue, but I can certainly ask the city attorney to look into that a little more. But it, Mike, every year, he knows that I say this to him, I says, what is the cost, including overhead, of being, of providing the service? And he comes back, and that's where the $5 per ton number comes from. Every year, we look at it, and that's, we left it open in the agreement, because every year, there's going to be some kind of an escalator as to what our costs are going to be and go up. So, setting aside the construction costs, which we would have to do whether Metawa's there or not, we are covering our costs, and it's really making sure that we're out there, we're providing the service. Could we tell them to go away? Sure. And I guess they could go to Vernon Hills or somebody else and ask for storage as well. But I don't want to mislead you or the community that this is not really costing us anything, because we would be asking for $200,000 to reinforce these salt bays, whether we did it for Metawa and the school district 67, or nobody, right?
I get that totally. My issue has nothing to do with the cost. I don't care if we charge them $100 a ton, we made a huge profit. I don't, it's the concept. I don't think we belong in the business of providing amenities for other communities, just like we disconnected the water service to Delmar Woods, which did have a cost to us, because our guys were having to flush the hydrants at Old Mill and Waukegan all the time. We don't belong in the business of providing municipal services to other municipalities, whether we're in love with Metawa or not. So it's, David, the, my issue isn't the cost, it's the principle, it's the concept. I don't think we should be doing it, and I'd be happy to give the $200,000 if it's all for Lake Forest, but not for Metawa, not for Libertyville, not for Lake Bluff, not for Highland Park. I don't think that's our business.
Well, I think we can have that broader policy question, because we do a lot of service for a lot of other communities. So if that's the policy of the community, staff needs to know that.
I think I disagree with that. I see no reason not to be a good neighbor. And as much as we're in conversation, and Mike, and you're a major part of it, with how we can develop synergies and share services with Lake Bluff, I think more and more, we ought to, we ought to expand these types of conversations and, you know, trade and work off of each one, each other's core competencies. And I think that's a wave of the future, not something we ought to be looking at now to discontinue.
Well, I don't disagree with that, Jack, but we're always the host. Metawa's got plenty of land upon which they could build salt bays, it got plenty of tax revenues from Costco. They're not woe-is-me community. They can build their own salt base.
I understand the Costco thing, but, you know, the big brother generally takes care of the little brother. I mean, it's, it's almost, it's almost a fact of, you know, a fact of nature.
There are some reciprocal agreements here. I mean, this, we don't live in a vacuum, you know, we're not, we're not an island unto ourselves. We have boundaries with these communities, and we share interests on many things, and I think there is something to be said for, you know, one hand washing the other on some of these issues, as opposed to sort of being, you know, uncooperative. So I, you know, I see both sides of it, but I sort of come down on the side of having a good, open, daily reason to be in communication with these people about various things, because when the chips are down, you know, we're going to need each other.
Bob, if I'm not mistaken, we have, we've had a longstanding relationship with Metawa with a variety of different services that we provide to them, and we get fees and dollars paid to us. Is that not correct?
That is correct, yeah.
As well as, as well as, Metawa, as well as other communities, as Alderman Reisenberg mentioned, around Bannock Burn and others.
But then, they're paying us for services rendered by our professional staff. Who absorbs the pension fund liability for the professional staff? I mean, is that amortized in there? I mean, we're, we're, our revenues are crossing our expenses, and the biggest problem we have is pension fund liability, is it not? From my four years here, that's my understanding, it's the pension fund liability that's killing us. We're not in business. We're in business to serve this community. I don't think we should be in the business, and it is a bigger, broader policy question that maybe we need to examine at future dates. I don't think we should be in the business of providing services to other communities, unless it really is going to cover all of our long-term expenses, and the pension funds are humongous.
And I would say, Alderman, you raise a really good point. We have, in the past, conducted, I think they're administrative overhead studies to determine what that cost is. And so when we look at providing service, and I'll just use the Village of Lake Bluff, Metawa, Bannock Burn, Highwood, every one of those agreements included an administrative overhead charge that included some of that. Now, having said that, it does come into play, because we just had this experience within the last two weeks, that the Knollwood Fire Protection District is now going to contract, starting actually March of next year, with Libertyville Fire Protection District for ambulance service. And right now, we collect about $149,000, $150,000 a year in fees and charges for that that will go away, but unfortunately, we're not able to reduce staff. And so part of this trade-off is that we have what I would call excess capacity that we are able to leverage and sell service to these other communities, whether it's building inspection services, elevator inspection services, plumbing inspection, zoning inspection, Croya, whatever. I mean, we have all those services that we've been in the past selling to our neighboring communities and making sure that it's not costing. Believe me, we're very sensitive to the issue that you're referring to, but unfortunately, if we're not careful, then we're going to price ourselves out of the market, but we're not going to, we're going to lose revenue and not reduce our costs. And that's what I'm most concerned about, is we look going forward.
Okay, fair enough.
Any other comments? If not, ask for...
Wait, I have another question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And on the last item, Gorton, the west doors, are those just the two doors that are getting replaced for $20,000?
The two heavy wood doors, yeah.
That's $20,000 for two doors.
Yeah, and if Dan Martin, or maybe Mike Thomas, might be able to address that, but my understanding is they have to be, or maybe Kathy could, my understanding is that they have to be...
I don't think so.
That's right. That look didn't get it, and I apologize that Dan's not here, but my understanding is that those have to be specifically milled and manufactured for that. We are hoping that it will be something less than that, but that's sort of what we have, or I should say, building maintenance has identified as the cost of replacing both of those. And I think the frame might need to be reworked as well, but don't hold me to that, I can get you more detailed information on it. And part of the idea was to try and have the current contractor work on that, and we will be bringing pricing back to you, we think, because the contractor who's really on-site right now will be bidding, but we'll also get two or three other bids to just make sure that we're getting competitive pricing as we do it, but we want to try and get the work done while all the other work is being done and not get... not get Gorton done, and then come back two months later and close off the west doors.
Just a huge number for two doors.
It is. I agree. My reaction was the same as yours.
Back on the costing of services that we provide, especially to others, I assume we have some kind of costing model that's fully loaded, that the finance department has developed. At some point, it might be useful to kind of walk through that.
Sure. And actually, we can provide you with a study. We, I think it's every five years, but it might be every three years, that we engage a company by the name of, oh, we just did it. It's not client-first. Well, it's a, a firm that we've done to basically update that information, and they look at both staffing costs and how we, this is how we also come up with the allocation numbers to the water fund, the golf fund, and some of the other funds. They come in, and they look at where the staff's spending their time, plus what the overhead charges are, and that's where we come up with that number. So I can have Elizabeth send out copies of that to the council, because we just updated it within the last six, nine months.
Any other comments?
I just have one on Gorton. I think there's, just because I'm involved to some extent there, the work they're doing there right now is, is rebolstering and rebuilding a place that would have cost the city with its agreement, a lot of money on an annual basis over the course of the next few years, or the, you know, into perpetuity. And I, the bulletproof nature and way that Bully and Andrews and the, and the work that's being done over there, the improvements are right down to making the nails better. I mean, it is really impressive work. And there are some budget overruns, and I think there's going to be a couple more opportunities, I hope, for Gorton to keep that foundation money in place and come to the city for more improvements relative to the agreement in the future. And I would just, I would just, I'll be off the council by then, I would think, but I would hope they would be welcomed, because of the lack of liability that's going to go farther down the, I mean, it's going to cost a lot less in the future the way they're doing things now. So a little bit of paying forward for such a high-quality project, I hope, is well-received.
You know, I think just before we vote on the omnibus, I'd like to make one comment. These topics that we've discussed related to this are important and timely. And Alderman Adelman, I agree, and Alderman Moore, I mean, we are, we're in a fiscal position today that we talked about a year or so ago, a what-if scenario. And that scenario is what happens if or when, and it's going to be when, we begin to lose revenue from Springfield. And last week, we began to see the, the start of that happen. So I think we have, obviously, we have a budgetary meeting and a lot of discussion about capital and long-term planning coming up on March 9th. These discussions are very applicable to that, and I think it's more than opportune time to have some bigger picture discussions, Bob, about kind of where we see ourselves going and the things we're going to have to do to accommodate the realities of what Springfield continues to thrust upon us. So I, I'm grateful for the council to continue to, it may appear to some that we're looking for nickels and dimes, but we need to find those nickels and dimes. And I think we have an obligation of the community to do that. Could I have a motion for the omnibus, please?
So moved.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Eisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Adelman?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Eight yay, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy, very much. Next item on the agenda, ordinances. Any ordinances to come before the council this evening? Seeing none. Item number seven, new business. The council will go into executive session this evening pursuant to five ILCS. The city council will be discussing threatened or pending litigation. The city council will also be discussing the consideration of the sale or lease of property owned by the public body. I need a motion to adjourn into executive session, please.
So moved.
Second roll call vote, please.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Eisenberg?